Okay, Tuesday, June 28. And I have no idea if I applied 10, 51, 501. We'll make the call to order. And first on our docket is comments from the public. And I'll go to the Zoom meeting first. Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to make the comments? Kristen, Judy, Marie, no one else? All right, and I'll turn to our public here. Anyone here who would like to make a public comment?
Yeah, I would.
And who are for record?
Claudia Way.
Okay.
I'm here above the pavilion on Sheffield Street at the senior housing.
Okay.
At the last meeting, I learned a lot about this process. And I understand that applications have to be sent in. And is this committee the ones that are going to approve the applications?
We will send an application to the Board of Selectment.
Okay. I don't know if any of you have been down there, but if you go down all the way to the back and to the right is where they would like to put this intrusive sidewalk and pavilion. And I went over to the estuary last week, and it is absolutely beautiful over there with the work that I have done with the gazebo. There's actually a view. What I can't justify is spending $80,000 on a pavilion that is going to be used maybe five months out of the year, when you've got this beautiful same amount of distance walking already done that I understand costs a couple hundred thousand dollars to do. And the estuary, when $80,000 could be put to use by businesses that have suffered through this pandemic. So I just want you people to know that this pavilion is an unnecessary thing when you have this beautiful section from the back of the estuary at the same amount of distance that people would have to walk if they even wanted to do it. It's just $80,000 that could be put to a better case, period. Anyway.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your comment. Anyone else would like to speak? Mrs. Estes?
Mrs. Estes would like to apologize for the application that came in. There are some typos in it, and you will notice that some prompts are larger than others. And I assure you that my name that came out super large, my ego is not that large. And that crossover from being elected to make it would not allow me to make changes without erasing everything. And I only had an hour and a half to do it. I was on vacation and it changed me. And I just wanted to let you know I do know how to spell and I do know how to move.
Anything else?
No.
I'll test that for egoism tactic. Someone else with public. And your name?
Charles Calson, past commander of American Legion Post 113. I have a prepared statement, if that's okay. I'm here with President Samantha Fung Guy French and our junior vice head group and a wife representing the auxiliary.
Should we move closer to the microphones or?
Yeah, it can't really hear you. Could you?
Certainly.
This little blob right here is probably what's going to be recording you.
It's a third floor.
Yeah.
So the stand is?
Stand or sit, whichever is more comfortable for you.
That's okay with my back. Members of the board, American Legion Post 113 has been incorporated in the town of Old Saybrook since 1929. Although we are part of a larger organization, we are independently operated. We have been providing services to the community since we were established over 90 years ago. Our services include and are not limited to Boy State and Girl State programs. The Boy State and Girl State programs involve the students in part of the operation of local county and state government. The students learn the rights, privileges, and responsibilities of citizenship. The training includes legislative sections, court proceedings, law enforcement presentations, assemblies, bands, courses, and recreation programs. The cost of the post is $350 per student. State Police Youth Week. The Connecticut State Police, in conjunction with the American Legion, run an annual State Police Youth Week that is open to 16- and 17-year-old high school students. Youth Week is modeled after state police recruit training and provides students with a unique opportunity to gain insight into the training duties and expectations of Connecticut State troopers. The cost of the post for each recruit is $125. Memorial Day. On the Sunday before Memorial Day, American Legion Post 113, with assistance from the old Saybrook Boy Scouts, removes old American flags and places new American flags at the graves of all veterans in the old Saybrook cemeteries. We purchase 720 flags annually. We also provide mulch and plantings for the town green during the Memorial Day ceremonies. The cost of the post to the post is well over $750. Post 113 Hall and the community. Our hall is available at no cost for celebrations of life for deceased veterans, friends of Post 113, and their families. Our hall is available at no cost to the Montessori school children. That's about 100 yards down. And whenever they have the gatherings, parties, holiday get-togethers, it's free to them. Our hall is available at no cost at charitable organizations for their meetings. Donations. In the past, American Legion Post 113 has donated to Fidelco Guide Dog Foundation to partner exceptional people or bind with expertly bred and trained German Shepherd guide dogs, providing clients with increased independence to improve their lives. Post 113 has donated to the Fisher House Foundation, who build and provide free housing for families visiting their hospitalized wounded warriors. Post 113 has donated to wreaths across America, where a wreath is placed at the grave of every veteran on December 17 in coordination with the wreath laying ceremonies at Arlington National Cemetery. We don't know them all, but we owe them all. Post 113 has donated to veterans, needy families, and individuals. Post 113 has a history of community involvement. We helped many. We wish to continue this tradition. Our need, our need is now. As an organization that has helped so many, we seek our proper funds to continue our tradition. We're no different than any other business in town, but we do have one very big difference. None of our members are paid, thus assuring. Any money received will eventually make its way back to the community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Is there anything else I can add or any questions?
Any questions from the committee members?
I do have a copy of this if someone wants that, or I can leave it here.
If you leave it, they'll probably look up our secretary right now. I do have a question though. Did you apply for a request for ARPA funds?
If there's an application, we have not received one yet, but would be happy to make that.
Make that application. But did you make a request from us previously?
We had some previous correspondence, yes.
Okay, then I think we'll make sure that they did an application.
I think this is where we got the balance sheet and we had to get it updated. Something's up in our calling.
Yeah, basically, we, I think we corresponded. Yes. And you, I think, what were your, your last request was for about how much?
We were looking at about, yeah, $60,000 were there.
Well, 60?
Correct.
But then after that, you modified it, didn't you? I thought you modified it to down to like $6,000 or something.
Don't vote.
No?
No.
I received a second letter from you.
You did?
Yeah, and in that letter, oh, was that different?
The amount was the same, but I think there was a further explanation of what we were looking at.
Okay.
Okay. Maybe it's a typo with zero.
There might be, there might be a typo.
It was for?
That would be a problem.
It was for the stove, right?
We have, yes, yeah, there's a ten burner double oven stove we have right now. That's probably 50 years old or more, and it's falling apart. And it's, has its problem with leaking gas and it has a problem with the igniter's. Well, it's a pilot lights. And it just sits there and uses fuel whether you use it or not. We've had some issues with fittings that have come apart, that kind of thing. We turned it off during the closure of the pandemic. Pandemic, but getting it re-lit again without blowing it back up, building was a real problem. Just can't take the heat.
Yeah, exactly. How do you, how do you normally raise funds?
We raise funds through different events. We have car shows, we have Wednesday night dinners, we have Sunday morning breakfasts and that kind of thing. So a lot of it involves cooking, kitchen, that kind of thing.
So I think what I, I think our, I thought our correspondence, you had asked for an amount of money. And I said, could you please give me a net loss?
That's true.
Yeah.
I gave you the difference in the gross, right? And then in the second one, I gave you the net, but the net doesn't show a great big difference because as a nonprofit, your net's going to be low because if you're doing very, very well, then you're paying money out in donations and services. And if you don't do that well, then that's about the same because you're not paying anything out or donating or helping anybody. So I did give you those. I might have a P and I give a P and L. I'm sorry.
But if, I mean, just as a question from a committee member. If you were closed, you were not allowed to rent your hall. You weren't allowed to have a fundraiser because if I remember rightly, you couldn't have more than 20 people at a clip, then it wouldn't make any sense to have that. So literally, you had no revenue, no income to do what you normally do as a business or a nonprofit. It should be used to word business, nonprofit.
That's correct, yeah.
So if your request is you lost that money, you have no ability to gain that money at all. And I'm sure you made it like an average. This is average what we earn as a hall rental, this is average what we earn as car show, breakfast, hot dog meals. I mean, you do so much over there. It's like the sign changes every day.
Yeah.
So my question is, what happened to that request or did you not make that request? I'm lost here because I didn't see any paperwork.
We, we didn't fill out an application. If there was a form, I don't believe so.
The correspondence was shared with the meeting, but the application has not been released.
All right.
Except, yeah.
I would love to have you fill out that question so we can talk about this.
Everybody who has sent in any kind of inquiry or has presented here will receive the application as soon as you guys approve it officially.
Okay.
All right.
So the next step would be to fill the application.
Yeah, whatever.
Matt, what is it? What does the second letter say?
So I see where the, they provided their financial statements, their P and Ls from 1920 and 21. And when you look at the difference at that in their net, in their net at the bottom, it's about $6,000 difference in terms of what they're missing from 19 versus 20 or 21.
It's a great difference between the gross in 19 and 20. And that's where, as, as we had done one in the past, as I pointed out, a lot of money was given to these organizations, so.
Right. I guess, I mean, oh, go ahead, Kristen.
Kristen, go ahead.
I was just going to make a comment that, you know, if they have lost revenue and income from the pandemic, their application should be focused on that versus asking for money for a stove because the stove, right?
Well, we were, we were making a list of things we needed. Yeah, that's all.
No, I understand that, but, but it should be more about like what revenue you lost and it impacted you because of COVID. You know, I, I mean, so what I'm saying is like if you need the stove, I don't know. When you just say that you need a stove, I mean, the stove isn't really a COVID-related need, but it could be part of your lost revenue as to why you aren't able to purchase it on your own. So I think you just have to word it in such a way so that it makes sense versus just asking for money for a stove and these items.
Okay, I didn't want it to be put that way, like we're asking for money for a stove. Trying to show what we had done in the past as far as giving money in support of the people in order to continue our meals and our other things that we use a hall for. A stove would be nice. We're going to end up having to get one. But I can, if the application makes the wording better, then certainly I can. If it's something that's downloadable or do you pick it up here?
We actually tonight at this meeting hope to approve the application so that it can be distributed.
Very good.
And maybe we can just phrase it in a, in a way where it's, if you were continuing your standard operating, you know, your standard gross income from say 17, 18, you know, in more normal times, would you still need an influx? Or were you operating at a profit where you could get the stove and afford the flags and that sort of thing?
Right, no, we have not recovered.
Well, my question is pre-pandemic. Were you running at a loss then?
No.
Okay.
In fact, we had, we had money to do some very, very bad needed repairs. We had a furnace we had to replace, and we had a septic tank that wanted to collapse. We didn't have money to do that. And then it just went.
Yeah, I guess, and I don't want to belabor this, I really don't because obviously it's a great organization. And I think funds will be probably favorably considered here, okay? But when you have a car show and when you have like the art show, there are costs associated with that. You, do you charge at the car show?
No.
Right, so how, okay.
So we make money by selling hamburgers and dogs. We have all of them on the grill.
So you pay for the hamburger, you go out and buy the hamburgers and hot dogs. Do you reimburse yourself for the hamburgers and hot dogs?
Yes.
Right. So then there's a net loss after that. That's what I'm saying. That, that's what the, that's where I was going with that.
Okay, yeah.
Because there's a gross cost to it and a gross revenue that comes in.
Right.
But when you net out what the expenses were that you may have reimbursed yourself with, the rest of it would be perhaps lost revenue. Not lost net revenue, that's all. And I don't want to complicate it.
Okay.
I already have. And that was my, my letter in response to.
Yes, and I believe I have that.
Yeah.
So I guess the next step is wait for the application. Very good. Thank you very much for hearing.
Do you have an email address on here? Or the, the application will be available on the town website, but if you want what's sent directly to you, I can email it to you.
Certainly, yeah. It's all small letters. C J C A L C I at S N E T dot N E T.
C J C A L C I.
At S N E T dot N E T. Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for a public comment? I just have one question. Last week, before she went on vacation, Sue Consoli said that she submitted an application, and I wanted to know if she did.
She did.
Yeah, I'll say, thank you. For the record, that was Liz. Sorry.
Sorry, Sheila.
All right, thank you very much for the comment public, for the comments to public. And thank you, gentlemen, for your service. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, approval of the minutes. I'm sure everyone had a chance to read these. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I want the motion.
All right, we do have a motion on the floor, and do we have a second?
A second, yeah.
Judy has a second. Any discussion? I'm sorry, look up on the board there. No discussion? All in favor of accepting the minute? Say aye.
Aye.
Any? Any abstentions? Okay, all approved. Thank you. Moving on to old business, we have on an agenda the approval of the application or we should approve an application form. I'm sorry, I've been hearing. All right, Marie, thank you. Yes, Marie?
She's muted.
Oh, sorry, Marie, you're muted.
I don't know if I'm on the video or not, and I was just wanting to be prepared for when we get to the vote, as you and I had emailed about. So I think I might be a guest and not a panelist on the Zoom.
Let's find out.
Okay.
We're trying, we're trying to promote you. Yeah, you should be getting an invite to be a panelist. There you are.
Congratulations, you've been promoted. All right, so I think I need a motion to accept the application. The ability to make an application, I believe, is what we need to do first, correct? So I need a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the application form as submitted for this meeting.
So we have a second? Any discussion? Here we go, move to vote. All in favor of accepting the application? Say aye.
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 Any ayes? Any abstentions? Okay, so move. Now we go to the review and final modifications of criteria for evaluating the ARPA applications. Does anyone have any suggestions for this application form? And I will give you a moment to make sure that you have it in front of you. It is a rather lengthy form.
Around this one? Yes.
All right. Thank you. So I will put myself out of the chair and just talk as a committee member. I had a question on the criteria as to commenting on the net part of the question. Because in review of the American Rescue Plan Act, and I know they don't have pages here, but the one I have is assistance to small businesses and assistance to nonprofits. There is no mention of differentiating between net and gross. So I have a question as to whether or not we as a committee can differentiate between net and gross when we're applying, when someone is requesting.
Sure, so I asked the Chamber of Commerce to do it, I can tell you that, and others. I can tell you, it reduces the requests rather significantly for expenses that the nonprofit in theory is just being reimbursed for from proceeds that are expended in trying to raise net funds. And so the gross number is a lot bigger, and I thought in an effort to make the funds go further, asking for a net loss seems reasonable, which I did. And I don't know why we would reimburse for gross. I don't know why we would do that.
I think there's some understanding, it's like for the clients club, they usually raise around $2,000, $2,800. But they just give it all away, other than 97% of it. And I think that's where the confusion is.
So if we, if a club or organization or even a business were to make a function, all right, the cost of the items in there would be subtracted from the money they get. All right, but to ask for just the money of, say, a profit, I think that would be unfair because they wouldn't have been able to do it unless they spent the money to buy a product. So that's all encompassed into that whole thing, like an art show. You know how much the art show costs?
Yep.
For security, for laboratories, for your things, right? But at the end of the day, when you collect all the monies, then you subtract off what you had to spend. And that becomes your profit. But to request from ARPA just those profit funds, I think, would be unfair because you had to spend the money that had to be part of the art show.
Well, but we compared it to previous years, right? So at the end of the year, our net was essentially our profit, right?
Yeah.
So, and that's what Carl asked us to do, which kind of makes sense to me. If we didn't have the event, we didn't have the expenses.
Yeah, but you have to have them, the event has to pay for the expenses decently. So then that's the total cost. I mean, if I was a retailer, yeah, I was a retailer, I had to buy a product in order to sell it.
Right.
Right? Just because I sell it at a certain point, profit margin, doesn't mean that the cost of the product didn't exist. I'm just confused.
Right.
You can tell.
We operate obviously all on net, right? So what we lost was the net.
It doesn't, doesn't matter.
We lost the whole income coming in because if you were closed, you know, like businesses were, they were.
You didn't have to be expensive.
No money came in at all. And yet, they had to pay for insurance, they had to pay for rent, they had to pay for electricity, pipe, heat, and all that. But no money came in. So they have a right to request the money that they would have received.
I would, go ahead, Casey, why don't you?
Casey, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just, it seems to me like the net calculation, the net revenue calculation better reflects the COVID impact because, because it reflects a difference, you know, like a sort of a difference that occurred in terms of an actual loss due to COVID.
So I think what they're all trying to say is that, you know, if you don't have the art show, you're not spending the money to get everything that the art show requires. So you don't make the profit, but you don't have the expense. So, but that's one event. And maybe a better way to look at it, which still goes to your bottom line, is you didn't have the income from the art show, you also didn't have the expenses of the art show, but you do still have insurance, rent, heat, and everything else. So you need that income, and it, then you can deduct the rest of your utilities and all of that to see the bottom line. But your expenses, your income's going down, your expenses are going down. But net-net, you're still at a larger loss because you have all the expenses that kept going without any permanent.
You really have to look at both of them.
Yeah, in my, in my opinion, you would have to look at both of them because if you only did what your overhead was.
Right.
All right? You couldn't exist as a business. You just can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things. You're talking about business, we're also talking about nonprofit.
Well, yes, but nonprofits often, I mean, your overhead, their overhead.
In a way to keep this all at a higher level. In a way to keep this all at a higher level, rather than us getting into accounting for the next hour. We have two point nine million, some of it's already been spent. Let's just say we have two million dollars left, round numbers. The nonprofits that have come through here have asked for exponentially less than, um, paving and utilities and a graveyard road. So maybe we just keep this all in perspective, that whether it's six to sixty thousand dollars for a great organization that's going all back into the community versus, um, seven hundred thousand dollars, you know, maybe that's the nut that we really want to dig into and understand better, rather than the difference between. I mean, it's, it's a big difference. I'm not saying the difference between six and sixty is minimal, but I think that the nonprofits that have come in have been very diligent and, um, humble in what they've been asking for.
We also can look at it, whatever we give them, we're giving back.
Exactly.
So it's a passive.
It's not outsourcing to a different, you know.
Well, I just.
I agree, yeah.
Maybe I'm conflicted, and I'm just, again, I'm not talking as chairman, I'm just talking as a member of the committee here, okay? Um, I'm conflicted a little bit, because we're looking at projects in the future, which are very important, and they've been um, eye-opening, say the least, in educational. But we're also have a responsibility to make those that were harmed whole. All right, and, and then my question is to make sure that as we do this application period, as we accept the criteria that we have to, um, weigh these applications on, that we don't forget that we still have a responsibility to make those that were harmed whole. And somehow, I just have a question, and it, and it like smacked me in the face maybe because I'm a, you know, former independent retail owner, um, but it, it just smacked me in the face that if we're only looking at the, the net criteria.
Also, with, if you're a small business, you had SBA loan opportunity, and you had PPP money opportunity.
Not necessarily. That didn't, well, as he has an example, that didn't apply to me, and needed a bid item.
I'm surprised it didn't apply.
It did now, because I have no employees.
Maybe when this says.
They would have paid you.
It just didn't, it's like.
When these, when these applications come back, there's also nothing stopping us from going and taking these spark notifications.
So, um, two, two things.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's been explained relatively clearly in terms of money out, money in. I don't disagree with you on items such as rent and insurance, okay? I'm going expenses. But the net loss for events, there's, there is a net loss for that. And to reimburse the gross on that, I think, is inaccurate. Uh, that's why. So, but, so I think there are two different buckets there, okay, and, and you mentioned that. Uh, secondly, uh, I don't believe, and I, I, I think, I don't think you said exactly this, but we don't have an obligation to fully reimburse or make whole everybody who comes forward. We're not going to be able to do that. There's not enough money to do that. We have two point nine million, we don't have five million. So, um, you know, if, if everybody who had a loss came forward, we would not, we, you know, we'd probably be able to do forty percent to make people whole. And I think that's part of the conversation here, by the way, is not everybody's going to get everything they want necessarily, and it may be a percentage of the request. And that is happening in other communities also. Um, so, uh, I think Liz and Judy kind of said it best, um, better than I did, in terms of gross net. Certainly with events, if you buy the hamburgers and you sell, or, or you sell the hamburgers, you reimburse yourself for the hamburgers, and there's a net profit, okay? That should be, and you can't have that event, that should be reversed. And again, you're right, let's not get into, and, and we're digging a little deep on that. Um, however, you do have insurance, insurances and other ongoing expenses that in a COVID year, you had to pay regardless, and that is just a flat-out loss. I agree with you. It's a zero, zero, that's it. It's zero.
Okay.
Go on. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, I just, I just think we needed a little more compensation on that. And I apologize for having a vacation period at the time when we were trying to discuss this, and I'm sure Bruce feels the same way now that he is out here either, but thank you for, um, for that moment. So we need to, um, actually move on. So I make my question on the criteria. Is there any other question on the criteria part of, um, you know, looking at Maureen's, or, did you have something?
Yeah, I had two comments. Um, one is, I think maybe we should have some consideration for, um, like, ability to accomplish or achieve the project within the timeframe, within the timeframe, we have to designate a lot of the funds, so by 2026. Um, and the other thing was, um, in top priority, we list economic recovery, and then we have the net losses to businesses or not for profits due to COVID, and support, support for populations impacted by the pandemic. Um, I don't, I, I'm not sure, at least to me, it didn't seem like that accounts for some of what we talked about in terms of, um, I'm not sure that encompasses economic recovery entirely. Um, sort of like the, the larger economic recovery goal. So some of the things we've talked about have, and, and part of that is because I'm on the EDC, so those are some of the things we talk about, is sort of some um, ways to mitigate larger-scale impacts to the economy of the town as a whole, or to the economy of the tourism industry as a whole in town, or the retail industry as a whole in town, um, rather than individual businesses. Um, and I think that's something we talked about on this committee a little bit. So I don't know if there's another line. I don't, I don't have a suggestion for exactly how to, how to word it, but I just thought that was maybe missing.
I like your point. Very good point, Maureen.
Oh, so maybe support for, maybe support for impacted industries or something along those lines, or support for, um, recovery for impacted industries or for, something along those lines.
In the application, we reference, uh, tourism travel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's in the, I think it's encompassed in the application. I just, I'm not sure we totally grasped it on our criteria list.
Can you hear me?
Uh, Kristen?
Oh, yeah, yeah, hi. So, yeah, to Casey's point, you know, some of this, it's, it's more vague and in the application and in the cover letter. So this criteria seems like it's narrowing it down. It's not as broad, you know what I mean? So I, I don't number one think that we need it. Um, because I think it kind of is a given as it's worded in the cover letter and in the application. I think it makes it a little bit more confusing. Because we have, like, the questions are, there's questions in the application for them to answer that are kind of, like, that kind of pulls some of this information out from the applicants.
Is that, is the purpose of the criteria, I thought, maybe I misunderstood, is the purpose of the criteria sort of in, I mean, not internal, but for our, our consideration when we're, when we're reviewing the applications, is that right? In terms of how to prioritize?
I believe it's supposed to be our guidelines on how to look at the application.
Okay.
Kristen, there, did you have something?
No, I haven't here, because I wasn't sure. It wasn't my.
I just don't want to miss you, because I keep looking at my papers and everybody else, so I just don't want to miss you. Um. Well, what does the committee think? Do you think we need to add something else here, or do you think this is enough?
I think I got lost in the slew of paperwork here. Are we talking about what it's open to on the finance side?
The criteria, it's smaller.
I, I think the second bullet, just the word populations encompasses that.
And also, is the project eligible under the Treasury guidelines? That, that's in all, that encompasses everything for the committee.
It's, it's quite a big category. So. Maureen, are you good with that?
Thank you.
And I see your book, um.
Yes, I am.
And Casey, you're muted, so if you were saying something, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if everybody else doesn't agree, it's fine, we can just leave it that way.
Okay, then.
Yeah, because only we get an application. We're going to review it, no matter where they fall.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And we can make questions at that time as well.
Right, so I was thinking, like, if I'm going, looking at an application and going down the list and saying, like, okay, it checks this many boxes, or whatever, of our criteria, I just thought everything should be encompassed. Like, all the things that we have prioritized, like the pillars, sort of, that we prioritize should be embodied, sort of, that's all. But it's, it's, if everybody didn't agree, that's fine.
Um, all right, so consensus of the, of the committee here is we feel that, um, with the criteria that we have, um, we have populations, which is a broad spectrum. We have our, our Treasury guideline, which is a broad spectrum. So if we get applications that come in, we can question further details on them, so that we don't miss that. Would that be? Okay?
I don't think we're going to refuse an application after the bottom line is.
Using an application, I'm worried about it being less, given less priority.
I don't think, personally, I think it, I think we should leave as we can slice this a million different ways, but I think the more broad we leave it, like, we get simpler. We're going to go through everything of the same granularity that we have to date, but I think no matter how thinly we slice it, we'll still miss something. Um, I think it's almost more important on the, on an internal side to go through these initiatives and maybe take, take this bulleted list and prioritize it, almost flowchart it, to say, let's, let's start out, you know, is it feasible, um, you know, very high level, and bring it back down to a more granular level for us to discuss, rather than have the applicant check boxes, because their opinion and our opinion might be slightly different.
I'm not talking about for the applicant, I'm talking about the criteria that we, as the committee, are considering, which I think we're trying to come up with some list of criteria that are not arbitrary, so that we're all considering kind of a list of criteria that we all agreed on were priorities when we're approving or denying money for a particular project, that's all.
Right.
I mean, we also, I mean, we also didn't list, like, infrastructure, um, which I know maybe it's for consideration, but if I, again, if everybody else feels like we're on the same page from a, a consideration perspective, that's, that's fine.
Maybe we call it guidelines instead of criteria, because criteria is, okay, all these boxes need to be checked, but guidelines are, here are guidelines for when you're reviewing these applications.
I, I prefer guidelines. I, I think that's an excellent suggestion, because criteria means, well, it didn't, didn't fit this little one little sentence, so therefore we can't, you know. I, I think we should change the word to proposed criteria to review. And that, that broadens our ability.
Well, yeah, we're going to accept all applications.
It's not, it's not a question of accepting them or not, it's a question of which applications we are designating money, we are, we are allocating money towards.
Well, no, it's something that we would bring to the board.
It's a lot of valuation.
Right.
I think guidelines is a good suggestion. Um, the proposed criteria here, I think Casey's point is, this committee's going to say, like you, like you just said, this, this, uh, application didn't meet bullet number seven of the criteria, therefore, it should be given less weight than this other application. So guidelines are fine. You have time with that, Jennifer?
Yeah, I just personally think that they should be, like, this list seems to have some things that, in my opinion, I think is the project of priority for Old Sabre. I think that that's a very subjective question. I think whether or not it's eligible under Treasury guidelines, um, will it, um, need operating expenses beyond ARPA funding, and those are yes and no emotionless questions, and I think the more we can take the emotion out of this, the better. So I think, and I apologize, it, I couldn't be here two weeks ago, like, to give another pass at this and to, and to number them. As Carl said, you know, if, if it's not eligible under Treasury guidelines, then it's out, but
Yeah.
I have a question there. Aren't we doing this all under the umbrella? So isn't everything under Treasury guidelines?
If it's not, it's not considered, yes.
But aren't we, we're not, because we're under ten million, is it ten million?
We're still under the Treasury guidelines.
Oh, we do have to still follow all of those.
It's, you can designate, you can designate the spending differently.
Gotcha. Okay. You know, so, so it seems like that should be the number one question that we ask, and then maybe as a committee, we figure out, okay, if it's there, then what, you know, then let's go through the numbers, and I do think, uh, uh, as a project of priority for Old Sabre, nobody in this room can answer that.
Yeah. I would prefer to let the board of selectmen answer that one. I would not want to make that decision, and I don't think this committee should make that decision, because I think it's behind beho, behoofing us to select those applications to bring before the board, and you guys can question it.
So we can weaken it from guidelines to considerations.
Well, I also think, like, we talked about this at the beginning of the meeting, it, it would be helpful to have some, um, defensible statement from which you can refer to every time someone comes to you and is annoyed that they didn't get the money they asked for. And I would suggest something like, you know, we understand from COVID, during, during COVID, people were not able to come together, and that had severe mental and economic impact on our town. The goal of this committee is to bring forth people, bring people together, and for that reason, here's the priority that we've given to certain. Something that you can finesse in your, but I think that you need to have this criteria.
Two things, um, yeah. So I don't, I don't see any problem with, uh, is the project a priority for Old Sabre? Uh, number one, this is an ad hoc committee of the Board of Selectmen, you're here to represent the community, okay? So, uh, I don't think it's a stretch to say that this committee could make a recommendation that this committee feels it is in the best interest of Old Sabre. Um, so I think you could do that. Um, I don't, I don't care whether it's in there or not, to be honest with you, but um, I, I do think you can make a recommendation that, look, I think Board of Selectmen makes policy recommendations all the time. We think it's in the best interest of Old Sabre. It goes to a town meeting this fall too. So somebody can say, no, it's not. We don't think it is. Um, and we can gather that feedback, so, um, I'm not invested in this, I don't care what, I think we're probably quibbling, quibbling a little too much over some language, which is what you said earlier on some other stuff, so.
I just think that we're prioritized.
I don't know that we should.
And how we're going through asking the questions, that by the time we get to the tenth application, the twentieth application, we've got, like, the answers down pat, and it's less back and forth, or than just it needs this, it doesn't need that.
I don't know if we can prioritize, because each project that comes before us is slightly different.
That's right.
You know, some of it is heavy on the health side, some of it is heavy on the transportation side, or, or, um, group meeting side. So I, I think what we should do is, um, I think we need to take a look at this again, because some of us have some questions on it. And, and if we don't, um, have this down pat, then we don't have a guideline that we can go forward with.
Right.
So I'd like to have this, all of us review this again, um, especially some of those that are, were on vacation or back now. Um, and then come at the next meeting, and we will have a better, better feel of, of how to do this. But I, I, I personally, um, I, I find it hard to put a priority on it, because of the very different projects that were presented before us.
Don't you have to listen to all the applications first, and then go back and review it again to make your own decision?
I believe that because we are putting a date on this, I think, before, we haven't even agreed to that yet, but. I believe that because we are putting a date on this, I think, before, we haven't even agreed to that yet, but for discussion period, September timeframe. That's to your point, that that's when we start to, to review.
We didn't approve September 1 last meeting, no.
Yeah.
No, I thought it was a September 15th question. First question. Oh, all right, I'm, I'm wrong. I, I read it, read it in the paperwork.
Both dates were brought up, and then when we got to bringing together all the files, we settled on September 1.
Okay.
It hasn't been released, except for the the tier one.
This is let me ask, everybody's okay with September 1? Because I, I saw two dates here, September 1st, 15th. Okay, then we're fine with that. We're, we can move on, because we're, we're getting bogged down here with a lot of detail to, I hate to have that happen. Um, because we're moving along so well. So we're going to review the guidelines instead of criteria for our next meeting. All right, and review. Uh, review the letter from Economic Development Committee. Has everyone been able to review this letter? And, um, I thought it was a pretty good letter, by the way. Does anybody have any suggestions for changes on this letter? And I recognize our first line.
So, um, there's no, uh, costs associated with some of these. I think we have an idea as to what some of the costs might be. Um, I will tell you that the marketing, um, well, two, I, I'm gonna comment on one and number three. Marketing, I think uh, Suzie, before she left, had previously put a general number on that. I can probably find it. I think Jennifer may have it. Business development, small business support program. That is a very complicated program, as suggested here. I don't know. Matt, if you agree, uh, I, I, I know the Middlesex County Revitalization Commission has a capacity to assist, and I see set up an administration of a loan. Um, but I don't know who else is doing this. I don't know how complicated it is, but, um, this is also, the money's more for economic recovery than development. Um, that's very clear in the treasury guidelines, so I think we need to be cognizant of that. I just feel like on the timeframe we're on, I have no idea how much money this involves, and I don't know who's on EDC here, but I don't know how much money is proposed to make an impact. I'd say probably half a million, I'm guessing. Even to startup businesses. What if they go under? I'm not sure how that is a COVID-related. Not sure about that. Um, so I'm a little concerned with that. Transportation plan, I'm just gonna make this quick, because funded study designed for footbridge from train station to industrial park, Mariners Way. I, I conceptually don't understand that. So where does the footbridge go? From where to where? Now, I know there was talk about having a footbridge that goes over the train tracks to the industrial park, so that people wouldn't have to walk all the way around. The Mariners Way part, I'm not understanding that. We talked about this briefly. I still don't understand it. There's a sidewalk that goes over the bridge. I think of Mariners Way as where the former Thai restaurant was, and over there. So I'm not, I'm not clear on that.
I thought Mariners Way was down from where that building's been vacant for 20 years.
Well, it is. It's a whole area.
So when, when I was on EDC, what we had discussed was a bridge that goes over into the industrial park. Not anything over to Mariners Way, just basically to the other side of the tracks from where it currently sits. I don't know if Casey, if Dave.
Yeah, so I, I'm on the EDC, and, um, a couple, a couple of things, yeah. The, the original conversation and the project that Suzie proposed was the footpath over the railroad tracks to the industrial park. And I think that was where the general in the conversation at our, at our meeting, I think that was where, and Jennifer can certainly chime in too, but I think that's where most of the focus was in terms of, um, what we wanted to do, and we know the project is too expensive. The estimate, the estimate for that whole, the whole project, um, and I'll talk about the Mariners Way part in a minute, but for the whole footbridge to the industrial park would be two to five million, and we know that we're not gonna ask for, for that. So we don't think we even have that much left. So, but I think the, so our proposal was, is going to be um, or potentially going to be for the design component of, of that. Um, and then the Mariners Way, there were, uh, uh, some people on the committee, on the commission that were that we, there's been discussion about trying to, to do
If I turn this on here.
Development of Mariners Way, and so that sort of got added into the conversation, um, as could we also make some sort of connection to Mariners Way? Um, so I think that, so the discussion at the EDC meeting was we'll talk about both of them in the letter, and then we'll kind of move forward from there. Uh, because I think there were, there were some mixed responses on the commission, from the commission about that, but I think there was a desire to do something to try to, um, create some opportunity at Mariners Way, especially given impacts to property costs and things like that right now. But yeah, the, the primary conversation was, um, was the footbridge to the industrial park.
Isn't that the open paths go to the other side of the tracks?
Actually, it doesn't. It doesn't go to the industrial park.
It doesn't go to the other side of the track?
No. It goes to the other side of the tracks, but from the other side of the tracks, you can't get to the industrial park.
There's another set of tracks.
There's another set of tracks.
Yeah. Yes.
Are they being used? Are those the ones that go over to S.A.S. that are, that being?
And, and just, just so you know, anything to do with Amtrak involves an act of God, and I know you know that. I know you know that, Casey. Uh, and I have brought this up to DOT multiple times, because it's obviously DOT and Amtrak. I brought it up two weeks ago. I had a meeting with DOT, um, and uh, I will, I, I am pursuing the conversation with them about that footbridge. And, uh, they're just very difficult to deal with. I know you know that. So, anyway, enough about that. I don't wanna.
Quickly, I can just address the other question you had, Carl, or, or part of it at least. Um, so there were three different components that Suzie had considered or recommended to us previously. Um, so was, there was this small business revolving loan fund slash facade renovation, which she rolled in with the facade renovation program. Um, the estimate for that was about 500,000. Um, then there was a soft cost grant program estimated at around 100,000, and then there was a small seed, um, the revolving loan fund. So one was a grant fund, one was a loan fund, and then one was, um, facades and, and revolving loans. Um, and so I think that, um, when we had the conversation at the, at the last EDC meeting, um, we were talking about economic recovery for the town as a whole, and kind of like that whole umbrella, and what could we do to encompass that and to try to help with that, and to try to boost some business, create as many opportunities as we could to sort of boost businesses that have suffered, or, um, try to sort of keep the, the economic development and economic recovery train going, or get it going in town. Um, and so we incorporated kind of all of them in this letter. But again, I think that's something that, depending on how the ARPA committee reacts, and I, I'll report back to the EDC, I think we would, um, obviously, we're not gonna ask for 1.1 million. Again, for all of these, um, the intention of the EDC, I don't think, is to ask for full funding for any of them. Um, with the facade program, obviously, we hope that we would reapply for, um, you know, the other grant opportunity moving forward. So depending on what the, and, and there has been discussion about, um, there is some I think, um, the chairman of the EDC has some experience with the, the loans, so with the revolving loan fund, so he was, um, potentially going to, to talk about that. But so I think, again, depending on the reaction of the ARPA committee, we would and when we actually go to fill out an application, I think we obviously need to hone that a little bit better to something realistic and something we can accomplish.
So Casey, would the EDC um, filter and, and give out the grants and the loans?
I think that there, I don't think the EDC would do it, because I don't think we have the, um, like, the right to do that. Um, I, or the authority to do that. I think it would be something that would probably fall under the authority of the Board of Selectmen. Um, and, and I don't know the answer to that for sure. Maybe Carl does. Um, but we, it would be basically, there'd be a set amount, um, and, um, basically, as that gets paid. So the way, the way it was proposed for the revolving loan fund, you know, basically, as it gets paid back, it goes back out again.
I think the OCTC would be able to, for like a percentage, be able to do that piece, because they have it.
Yeah.
I think that's how.
Yeah. It says the MCRC and fees would be 5% of each loan. So that's the Middlesex County Revitalization Commission.
So we would need more information in order to do anything with this right now. I mean, this is just a, a broad statement of what we're looking at.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you. That was a lot of money.
I, I think we're just looking for kind of some input, and we just kind of wanted to get some input, um, to the ARPA committee. As the application was being developed, to kind of get our, get our our thoughts on the table, or get our thoughts in front of the committee, so that when the committee's thinking about projects as a whole, um, we sort of keep some of these in the back of your mind too, because these are more long, long range.
Okay, just two really quick thoughts on that. I, I think either having a representative or from MCRC, or a letter from MCRC saying how they operate, how they determine which businesses to grant to, to loan to, uh, might be useful for the committee, just to give them an oversight. Uh, secondly, with regard to marketing, I think we could probably refresh what Suzie gave uh, before she left, or what she did, what she proposed initially when the ARPA money came out. That's probably just pull it out of the closet and maybe refresh it and put it forward to the committee to consider. Those two things. Those might be easier handled like that.
So, I think we've discussed this, and we'll, they'll come back with more information on this one. All right. I know that we have really talked a lot on a lot of things, and it's given up to be the hour, um, of our use here. Um, but we have some other things to go through, and that's under new business, discussion of applications received to date, and make recommendations to the board. Um, so just kind of go right through this. I don't know which came in first. Jennifer, did you ever remember of
They were, they were in the order that they should like, I mean, even in the group, and they order, all of these people were offered, um, priority application.
Okay, so before us, we have, um, an application from the expanded hours of social worker um, by Heather Malardo for the Estuary. We have a social services department, um, department funding, or
There's two, because they're the same. Senior housing.
One is for senior housing pavilions, yeah, and then the other one is for um
Lions Club.
Lions Club, all right. And then we have one more for social services. Um, and I'm this is so hard.
We have four, right?
Yes.
I have four.
I jumped at the
Okay.
The one for 332.
All right, I have the, um, the one for 332. Okay. And on, on our Zoom meeting there, everybody has the four applications before.
Yeah.
It was Bruce's last conversation to do those that were time constrained, um, to request, um, those requests, uh, to be made. And I'm sorry, I, I spoke over to someone, so go ahead and speak up again.
No, I'm sorry. They, um, I see them. I didn't see them named. One of them, Estuary was named Estuary, and then it wasn't. So I found the ARPA one, for the social services.
All right, um, I do know that there is a time constraint for the one for the Lions Club. And Maureen, I'm gonna ask you, the chair of the meeting, uh, for that request. Um, I am refusing myself, uh, for that request for this time. So, go ahead, Maureen, you take it away.
Um, let me just ask a, a quick question. Are we voting on allocating funds to each of these projects now?
We're gonna vote to present it to the Board of Selectmen.
Do we just make recommendations, Maureen, to the board?
Because is the Board of Selectmen have to make the decision, or am I incorrect on that?
Well, that's the idea, yes.
I guess, may, may I ask of the group, though, based on like, sort of, all of the conversation that we had, does it feel a little, a little premature to be making recommendations now? Or, like, does it feel like we still need to, like, gather a little bit more information, and then we, we're talking about, you know, a recommendation versus a um, you know, a criteria. Does it feel like we're ready to start making recommendations to the Board of Selectmen? I, I have a similar concern, which is, um, and, and I know, you know, like, with the Lions Club, it's only 2,800 bucks, and I just wanna be able to give them the 2,800 bucks, so like, I, I understand that, but it, with some of the other ones, a, and I think we've done those smaller amounts, so maybe there's some precedent there. Um, but with some of the other ones, I, my concern is that we haven't even post, we just approved the application tonight, and we haven't even posted it on the website or anything yet, so it seems a little bit like there were some entities that you know, kind of had a leg up because they knew about some of this, and that, I'm, I'm concerned about that seeming a little bit unfair.
I was gonna suggest, does it make sense to, like, get all the applications in, and then review them, and then prioritize them? So if we get in, you know, 40 applications, then we prioritize them? And then we like, you know, then we'll say, okay, we're gonna fund these first 20, and then we see what the budget number comes to, and say, okay, well, we can, you know, it's under the 2.9 billion, we can fund another 10.
Can I suggest in a way that it might wrap things up faster and just be simpler? We just make suggestions to the Board of Selectmen, so why don't we take these two applications that are time-sensitive and just forward them to the Board of Selectmen and say, these are very time-sensitive, perhaps you wanna review them earlier, and then we're not voting on it, and you guys can do what you want with the 12 brands that.
You're talking about the Estuary and the Lions?
The Estuary and the Lions. That maybe we just, as a group, say we're gonna forward them to the Selectmen's office, and then you guys can make a decision, rather than us go back and forth, because it, they do seem time-sensitive, and if we wait until September 1, which would be equitable, we're gonna miss a couple windows here, especially for the Estuary Center. So maybe we just kind of pass the buck, unfortunately, to Carl, and let him deal with it.
What about, what about social services, though? Because social services, and it presented to us, like, one of the first people that presented to us, and there's a dire need for, you know, mental health services for people, especially.
Is that a, is that a because it looks like the Estuary is already up against their hours and delaying.
The social services is, in their, in their opinion, urgent, because, um, as of June 30th, um, their food funding went out, and something else. Um, so that's why they were given priority to have their application considered earlier than September 1.
Right.
Yeah, no, I agree totally, and I think with a, a project of that size, it does need to wait to see how, I think, shake out these two decisions, like, no brainers.
I, I am open to, you know, I mean, we can forward these to the Board of Selectmen. They have fulfilled an application. And then the Board of Selectmen can, you know, if they feel that they need more information from the social services or whatever organization we're doing here, that's fine. But I think some of this is time sensitive and I think we have to be sensitive to that path. I mean, it doesn't always fit in our criteria, but then again, do his money is already appropriated from, from ARPA that before we were in existence. So I don't think we have to feel too bad about, you know, bringing this forward to the Board of Selectmen.
One question I have on this social services one is that they're talking about assistance for rent mortgages. Mortgages are on moratorium. Rents are on moratorium through the state of Connecticut. So I'm not sure why that's even a little.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions about, additional questions about the social services application too. I'd love if they could answer some questions. I know they already came in and they presented.
I'm sure she could come in.
I think she was on vacation right now.
Virtually.
Yeah. So, but I'm sure she would make herself available for any questions. But, I mean,
And then as far as like internet computer access, I mean, that's, that's available with the library.
It sounds good.
I mean, honestly, I think we need more time to review everything. I mean, we just got the application approved today. We just, you know, these applications, you know, we've got three to consider, but we, I thought we had a deadline. We're going to get them all in and then make our decision and prioritize how we're spending this money instead of doing a piecemeal.
Well, yeah, and I would say to me, it feels a little bit like Ready, Fire, Aim, right? It feels, it feels like, or like sort of a rolling process when I think one of the things that we would do would be to understand, we talked about prioritize, right? Let's prioritize what are the needs of the community. We're all representing like different factions of the community so that we can prioritize what we think would, you know, be good recommendations to make. It just feels a little bit like we're.
So.
Just on the Estuary, one more point, like it seems like there's a lot of controversy around that and I'm not sure what that.
It's not for the gazebo.
Yeah, that's not for the senior housing.
It's not for the senior housing, Kristen.
Okay, so.
This is different. Yeah. This is a social, it's, it's a
They needed help in, in.
Expanded hours for a social worker for the Estuary. And I'm not, I'm, just for you to be clear, the total cost is 94,000. They're asking for 10,000. Okay. I'm, and I'm not promoting, so let me, let me say this. You're not, there was an article this week, I, I get this email every day. There's five government articles. Sounds thrilling, golly, aren't you sure? One of the articles was, how are towns spending ARPA money? And the answer was slowly. And uh, look, Sue may have, Sue has put forward some needs. Everybody has needs. I've said all along, not all the needs are going to be met. They may not be met on everybody's schedule. I don't know what to say about Sue, Sue Consoli's request in terms of food assistance or, you know, for the summer, I mean, or in July already. So if the committee were going to do something on food, that might be a portion of her request.
We do. It's in here. It's $125,000 for the food program.
For the summer?
It doesn't say the duration.
Yeah.
So if we had a net amount for the summer, because the restaurant stuff is not, is very time sensitive.
Yeah.
And I can't imagine it's $125 for the next two months. Maybe it is. I have no idea, but it seems a lot.
It says that that includes for youth attending, youth and family services, social emotional support programs, youth summer food program health and food cards, supplement SNAP, food pantry and food bank. So I don't think it's all just summer. I think it's a variety of.
No, it, it, she included everything in that, in that dollar value. Again, we are running really late.
So can we break down for the next meeting or not?
We can make it. We can ask Susan to come back and, and try to break down some of this that she gave us, if that's what you want.
I'm going to just make, I, I don't have a vote here. I'm just going to make a recommendation. And the committee can listen to Sue at the next meeting or perhaps consider this. And again, the committee could approve immediate ARPA funding for summer food assistance. And wrap that into a larger request at later times. So in other words, she could ac- access the ARPA funding now. And by the time you meet in two weeks, she may have only expended $2,500. Now, you may not like that. You don't have to like it. If you don't want to approve that or don't want to go forward with that, that's fine too. It would give her immediate access to funding for food assistance, which I think was one of her primary requests. What was the total?
So can I ask a question? Is this something that we can satisfy out of old Saver Cares?
Yes, I would say definitely with immediate funds. Absolutely.
Right?
Oh.
Solves one problem and then we can sort of defer on some of the other voting.
Uh, as long as the cares committee was okay with spending the money like that.
It's not $25,000, you're saying, right? For right now? To hold them.
Not even 25,000. Be less than that probably.
Great.
Yeah.
Was the cares the cares committee okay with allocating funds like that? I don't, I don't remember. You, you guys are more in tune with that than I am.
You mean to.
Extend the criteria, but we could have a meeting and extend the criteria.
Or that's just social services for food. I don't know. So.
I, I know Heather McNeil would be having to talk to you about it if you want more clarification for your.
Well, can they respond? Yeah, so that, yes. We're not waiting to show.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want anybody to be, to be harmed with this time constraint items and especially school just closed, what, a week and a half, two weeks ago. Now they're into, to July and the need is there for the summer food program for the students. That's one aspect. The other aspect is, if I understand it right, some of the SNAP allocations are going to end July.
They're not. In fact, they're getting an email just now.
Oh, okay. Fresh off, fresh off the scene.
That the governor today, just today, extended the COVID public health crisis once again so that the town can still, or the state can continue to receive SNAP funds.
Oh. All right.
That came in like five minutes ago.
Fresh off the press. I love this. All right, so.
If, if that is applicable, which I assume it is.
That, I know that was one of the criteria that Sue talked about.
Was the end of the COVID health crisis.
Yeah. Yeah. And the fact that the federal funds for the SNAP program are going to be greatly reduced on July 1st.
So go ahead.
So that brings us back to what were we supposed to do with these applications that came in before we did our application form, before we did our criteria? Does this committee want to send these forward to the Board of Selectmen or send one or two, three or four? All right. It's a consensus here. People have to speak up.
All right, let's do the, let's send the social worker one for 10,000. Let's send the Lions Club for 2,800.
I would agree with that. I would agree. And I would just say, let's find out the urgent need from social services. And maybe it goes through Saver Cares, which would be great. If not, we'll put that in the next one. I would agree.
Maureen, you go with that because you're the chairman now.
And then moving forward, we're going to collectively look at them all.
Yes.
And that makes sense.
So Governor Ned Lamont announced he's a sign of public health emergency deck that will allow the state to continue to receive supplemental support from the federal government. Means the state will continue to receive an extra 34 million through the supplemental SNAP program every month. The support will continue until December 15th, unless the federal government decides to end the program before that. And the only reason to do the health emergency could continue to maximize the federal benefits we're getting for SNAP.
Great, great. Yeah. On all the press, love to have this for Selectmen at our meetings. So back to what we were doing here. And what Brad is telling me now. We, we did not decide on the flyer.
Who made the flyer?
Jennifer?
Did a nice job. I love the color. You were freezing.
So Jennifer.
I can take criticism, so don't worry. Sorry.
I think, I think it's very catchy. I love the color.
All right. So I, I just want to make sure we're on track. Brad has made this suggestion to Maureen to send the Lions Club and
10,000.
10,000 of the social services to the Board of Selectmen.
And I got a second and a third.
No, wait a minute. I, I gotta make sure I have this. So I wrote down you wanted to send the Lions Club and the Estuary to the Board of Selectmen. Correct.
Estuary. All right. And that's correct. All right. So Maureen, take it away. You're chairman. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Maureen, you're.
Sorry, I was on mute. So Brad, you are making a motion to send the applications for the Lions Club and the Estuary to go directly to the First Selectmen's office?
That's correct. And I have a second and a third.
Yeah, a second and a third.
A second.
Call of the favor. I oppose. You're on mute, Kristen. Your, your speaker's not working.
Can't hear you.
Raise your hand if you say aye.
Are you abstaining?
Every time you pick up and down.
She worked for town, Ken.
Can't hear you. She's very expressive.
We can kind of hear her.
There you go. Kristen? Oh.
I think you have, here we go. I don't have a good chance of supporting.
We can't hear you.
Did you know what she said?
Yeah, no.
No, do it in the chat.
Do we want to actually, if we're sending it to the Board of Selectmen, do we want to actually, like, say we're sending it with our support or something like that? That assumed?
It's assumed. We made a motion. Yeah. If you vote on it, if we voted a, what's approved? Yeah. Scott. It's a lot of stuff. All right. All right. She's chatting. Is she sending something to the chat? More maybe, or?
I saw Kristen saying we need two motions to abstain because Susan's on Lions. That's why I'm running the meeting now. So she, she passed the chairmanship over to me. So I'm, I'm right now serving as chairman. So that, so that's what Kristen was trying to say.
Okay. So you took a vote or not? Did you? Yeah, we did.
So we got through, so we got through ayes and then we didn't get through any nays yet. And then we didn't get through any abstentions yet. So we have the ayes. Are there any nays? Any abstentions? Susan, are you abstaining?
I'm, I'm recuse myself. I'm not here.
Okay. So she's, Kristen asked, do you want to vote on the one for the Estuary?
We'll just leave it as, as it is. Even as it is. Let's not make this more complicated.
We're on a roll.
I already did my part for complications tonight, so thank you very much.
Do I get to hand it back to you now, Susan?
Sure, because we're about to end this meeting. Think we accept that? Your flyer?
No, no, I know what, I mean, there's a lot of publicity here that needs to happen if you're going to meet your July 1st launch deadline. So you need to decide on this press release and this flyer, whether or not you want to.
Okay, so the suggestions for the press release and the notifications for public notice. And there was quite a few. We had the Harvard News, the Events Magazine, the town website, the public boards, application boards, and I'm looking for that piece paper. There was another one I.
How about for the school?
The school, including the school? How do we include the school if they're not in section?
Well, they have summer programs. They, they, we still have.
They use the family services.
They have, they have, they're on their website.
I haven't gotten an email from Trent Rivers in like two weeks, so feels empty. Could send it to him.
Are there any suggestions of more public notice availability sites? We have one for the school. Contact list. Anybody else think of anything?
No, I think that's great.
Do we have the board over by Mystic Market?
And we're using the acting libraries contact sites, correct?
We should probably just print one of these and have them put that on the board at the library too.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. On this flyer.
And what about the digital board by Mystic Market?
It'll be on the digital board.
On this flyer, would it be a good idea to put a phone number on there with a contact or you don't want to do that? I know the email is there, but I didn't know.
Who does, who does this email go to? Is it you, Jennifer?
You know what?
She quietly said yes, for the record.
So there is, there is actually a phone number on the website. Or, yeah. Or is it on the application for, for people who, if they do want to ask questions? We can add it to the form. I mean, I think we're trying to cut down on phone as much as possible.
I think the email is a better way of communicating because it's going to be attractive. But when you do the phone, it's not always attractive.
The other thing is answers to a lot of the email questions. We're hoping to continue to add to the FAQs as things might come up that weren't needed. So that that would be sort of like a bowling document.
And I just want, one suggestion I might make, because you do such a good job with the yellow, calling out the amount and questions. Maybe put the website in yellow too, so it doesn't get.
It needs to be a link anyway, in case we're sending it electronically, which the email is, so yeah.
What about a QR code too? Do that.
Yeah, people love those now.
Put one more thing on here.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. What have you?
All right. So we have Judy online for helping out Jennifer here, so we don't put everything on her shoulder. All right. Any other questions on the flyer or any public notification? No? Up there, any hands up? No? Okay. So I don't think we have to have a motion to accept this. I think we're just accepting it.
So, July 1st, we could send this on?
Um, yeah. Yeah, actually, the email is active.
Okay.
I mean, I was just shooting for July 1st that we have all of our decks aligned. If the application's approved and the email's up. The application is not on the website yet. That's the only thing.
You want to send out a email that's ready to go? Because I've gotten some requests on it for the application.
So I'll talk to our IT manager, the director tomorrow and see how fast we can get that. And then after that, you'll be good to move.
Okay, so any comments from our committee members? Have we anything more to add to our meeting, which is way overdue?
Oh my God.
Ooh, we have a motion on the floor.
Do you want to talk about the press release? You really should probably talk about, if you're good with the press release, you're good with it. I know the chairman was good with it. Right?
Yeah, well, I mean, we just want to make sure that we can start doing publicity immediately. So if there's any comments about anything that people disagree with, it would be good to know now change it and get it out as soon as possible. You did a great job at all.
Yes. And you'll be sending it to where?
Harvard News. The examiner doesn't really do that, but I'll send it over there. Anyway, we'll send it. I mean, you can help us.
Sure, sure.
We got the chamber, we got youth and family services.
Library.
Library, the estuary, all of their contact lists.
I mean, I think we will send the press release and the flyer to any of those agencies we talked about, be sure. So they can use them to distribute how they see fit and then.
And Harvard News is probably the most timely because the others, the deadlines are so.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll handle that from here. We'll get it up on our own electronic board on the website.
Do you think we can use the COVID emergency?
Yeah, that's the other thing, get it over to the chief and see if he can distribute it.
Right. COVID related.
Has that one of those involved?
Any other suggestions?
Then we still have a motion on the floor too. Is there a second?
Yeah.